Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Price.
Thank you, Mr. President. Out of an emergency caution, I'm recusing myself from item thirty-nine because it's unclear whether a buyer was selected.
All right, any other specials on this side of the room?
All right, finally, before we begin public comment, just as a reminder to people who are new here, we, the, the order in which public commenters are, are taken is taken at random. So you will hear names called out by a council staffer. Please wait till you hear your name called before lining up on your left-hand side of the council chambers. So, once you hear your name called, you can line up on your left-hand side of the council chambers in any order. Thank you. Okay, so, Mr. Herman, your time has not started yet, so I'm gonna ask that you wait to speak until your time has started, just the same as everybody else. Before he begins, just as a warning to all the members of the public, I expect Mr. Herman to say some rather offensive things. I hope he doesn't, but the Brown Act does not require you, members of the public, to listen. So if you would like, there are a couple options. You can listen to him give his public comment, you can exit the room and wait outside if you prefer to do so. You can also pop in your headphones or stick your fingers in your ears. The Brown Act does not require you to listen to the other speakers during their public comment, period. Mr. Herman, you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Item number three. Regarding public safety, el pinche departamento de cabrones. What the fuck, you're not translating?
The fucking department of, of fucking people.
Porque no entiende cabrones, pulgas, negros.
Why do you understand, uh, fucking and black and, um, bees?
Estos preguntas son muy importantes y necesarios por cabrones robando a nosotros pinchi ways.
Because these questions are very important for us, especially for the people, fucking people who are stealing to us.
Now, you see, that's what makes me an American citizen. I have that right. And I'm enforcing that right to declare why building a safety. Again, Mr. Attorney Rookie, look it up. Cohen versus California, look it up.
So you're welcome to speak to that during general public comment, as we remind you every time, but please stick to the agenda items for the first three minutes.
Working on it. Look at item thirty-nine in CD fourteen. Is that on topic? Good, you nodded, that means the dumb-dumb understands me. Because we're trying to stabilize affordable housing. How the fuck do you stabilize affordable housing, people? For years, you complained, you begged the city to pay your rent, you begged the government, which is the local government, because you don't support Trump, and Trump is fucking you over now. Because we want accountability when it comes to affordability, when it comes to housing, and Smokin' Scan will agree with me that you've got to have a good reason why to challenge affordable housing. There is nothing affordable here. Everything is expensive in Los Angeles, and the only white nigger is here to get that understanding right is me. So if you want to have any interest, support MAGA. Now look at item number... There are a lot of fucking items here, forty-six fucking item. Item number forty-five, groat. What's wrong with that problem? California Public Records Act, because people are asking why the fuck Los Angeles continues not to provide us with the text messages from that fucking coup who runs this city. That goddamn Samboz has destroyed, Los Angeles has destroyed the trust of the people, and I represent the people. America first.
General public comment.
Now, there's nothing wrong in, in having a puppet show of children on either side of me, because I care less. This is my arena, this is my floor, I control it like Smokin' Scan. Either you watch it or you don't. But here's the problem. Samboz, you brought all the kiddies in here to make statements against the First Amendment. What the fuck do they know? What do they not understand? You see that? I control the floor, although Soto Martinez gets his rent covered by our government. Nithya Nudal picks her nose while I look at her. And that other dumb padilla woman is a stupid fool.
So you need to connect this to something within, within the jurisdiction of the city.
And she's a fool, a union dude.
This is your last warning.
And your time has expired. Do not expect to hear from you from, for the rest of the meeting, or you will be subject to warnings and removal. Again, Mr. Herman, please vacate the podium so that we can move on to the next speaker. Morning, I, I know it's a tough act to follow, but which items would you like to speak to?
Uh, just on forty-two.
So, okay, so you have one minute for the item, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, uh, my name is Mitchell Wong, I'm here representing San Gabriel Valley Habitat for Humanity. I just wanted to say thank you guys.
Sorry, can we hold this time for a second? Do you mind pulling the mic up just a little bit? You, and everybody, you can adjust the mic if it, yes, go ahead.
Is this a little better?
Yes, thank you.
Uh, my name is Mitchell Wong, I'm here representing San Gabriel Valley Habitat for Humanity. I'm one of the project managers that we have there. I just wanted to take the time and say thank you guys very much for putting this on the agenda today. We are looking forward to putting people in affordable housing out in El Sarino. Thank you very much.
Good morning, which items would you like to speak to?
Item number forty-two.
Okay, so you have one minute, go ahead.
Good morning, councilmembers, my name is Hugo Garcia. I'm a lifelong resident of the community of El Sarino in CD fourteen. Uh, chairman of the El Sarino Organizing Committee, Director of Community Engagement for Cluck Shop, a nonprofit in CD thirteen, as well as, uh, Director of Community, uh, Community Engagement for Save Elephant Hill in CD fourteen. I want to speak, uh, in favor of this item and thank Councilmember Jurado, our council member and her planning director, Kevin Okubio, for standing with the community uh, in our efforts to have a voice as a community deserves in the, on this issue. And, um, I just want to say that this issue is larger than, uh, strictly a rezoning issue. Uh, the way the community looks at it, those of us that have been involved, uh, I've been involved for over thirty-five years in the campaign to defeat... Do I have two minutes?
So if, if you want general public comment, and I'll just remind everybody of this. So if you have an item you'd like to speak to and you want general public comment, please make sure to request both. I assume you're requesting general public comment, so yes, you have one minute for general.
Thank you, sorry about that. So it's larger than just or, or strictly a rezoning issue, because those of us who have been involved in the fight to preserve our community for over half a century in El Sarino, uh, have fought to stop and, and the freeway project maintained the integrity and the character of the community as it always has been. And we felt that we wanted our voice heard in that regard, and it was not being heard by city planning, by, um, our former council member, as well as the mayor's office. But when our council member Jurado came in, she readily, uh, listened to the community, and, uh, Kevin, uh, her staff member that met with us, were very grateful, because we got our voice heard, and, um, we believe that the motion that's being presented today reflects the sentiments of the community. So again, I want to thank the council members' office and staff, and we look forward to the motion being passed.
Buenos dias concejales, mi nombre es Madison Alarcón, con la organización Trans Latina Coalition, del distrito de la ciudad número diez.
Uh, good morning, my councilmembers, my name is Melissa Alarcón from Trans Latina Coalition from District Ten.
Estoy aquí para hablar en apoyo de la iniciativa de bienestar, equidad y cuidado de TGI.
I am here to support the initiative of well-being, uh, and care of TGI.
Es una inversión de tres millones de dólares en organizaciones comunitarias que sirven a personas trans y a TGI.
This is an investment of three million dollars that benefits, uh, community organizations and, uh, trans people and TGI.
Y es una inversión muy importante para nosotras como mujeres trans, ya que gracias a eso podemos, eh, apoyar a muchas trans con sus necesidades, ya sea que viven en este país o que van recién llegando.
This is a very important investment for us, uh, women trans, because it will support many needs, not only of the people that are here, but also of the newcomers, newcomer people.
El condado ha dado un paso al frente para apoyar a sus electores TGI, y todavía hay tiempo para que nuestros ayunos de alimentos hagan lo mismo.
The county has given an important step to support the TGI constituents, and it is at the time, there's still time for the city to do the same.
Estamos aquí por nuestras compañeras que ya no están, por las compañeras que han sido deportadas, y por las compañeras que están en detención.
We are here also to support the, those colleagues of ours that are not here, that are detained, and also those that are, that have been deported.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Yes, I am here, I rep, uh, my name is Seamus Garrity, I represent Habitat for Humanity of San Gabriel Valley. Um, and I just want to comment on the importance of this council action today, and just how long, um, a process it has been, and, and just tell you how grateful the organization is to Councilwoman Jurado and her staff for revisiting the item and making sure that it, it really is the best, um, version of the Up Zone that is possible. Um, I also, I just want to mention, you know, I, we represent, um, habitat, several Habitat for Humanity affiliates and Habitat for Humanity of California. And what they do is provide affordable home ownership opportunities. And I think that in the, in the space of housing advocacy, affordable home ownership is something that is greatly, um...
General public comment.
Underappreciated. We advocate for affordable housing, we advocate for, uh, rental units. Um, but affordable home ownership is, is something that is in a very unique space in that, in the, in the spectrum of that discourse. Um, and so I just, I want to take a moment to, um, amplify the, the mission of Habitat for Humanity as, um, affordable home ownership is, is something that really provides, um, families with a unique opportunity. So thank you for everything you're doing on this item, and, and please keep, keep Habitat in mind and keep affordable home ownership in mind as something to advocate for, thank you.
My name is Ruth Camelia Vey Aya, and I live and work in City District Ten. I'm a legal analyst at the TransLatina Coalition, where I support transgender expansive and intersex individuals fleeing persecution and seeking asylum. Our legal team has been at capacity for some time, and we've had to refer people out, yet none of the local pro bono legal service providers have room to take on new cases. This need is overwhelming, and the support is not keeping up. Transgender migrants face alarming rates of violence and discrimination globally. In Latin America and the Caribbean, seventy percent of trans murders worldwide occur, with most victims being black trans women, trans women of color, and trans sex workers. A study of LGBT asylum seekers found that ninety-two percent experienced physical assault, eighty-four percent faced harassment, and fifty-six percent suffered sexual assault. Even upon reaching the US, TGI asylum seekers often endure re-traumatization in detention centers, facing inadequate medical care and abuse. Please fund and protect the programs that uplift, uplift TGI.
Your time has expired.
Uh, all items, and, and for the clerk I signed up as Nick Van Exel.
And I assume general?
And general, please, yes.
So you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general, go ahead.
Uh, two of these items are directly related, but all of them are on the same core issue, forty-four, forty-five, forty-six. And that is the applicability of the California Public Records Act, and whether setting your records to automatically disappear means they are no longer subject to the law. Um, item forty-six is where this all started. While the city's use of disappearing G, G chats has been known for a long time, and this was the first real challenge to the policy, and what did we see? During the winter recess, the city attorney announced they would be evaluating this policy and investigating it. They clearly had pause about our legal vulnerability. And by the time the council returned from recess, what happened? Our city was on fire. On day one of the fire, the city attorney was asking departments, including the fire department, that's how serious this was, to, to end the auto-delete policy. Within days, they officially pulled the plug. And while they said this was about preserving the records so we could learn lessons from the experience, it's really clear this was about legal vulnerability, because every media outlet was piling on CPRA requests. That brings us to the other two items. We saw a bizarre and laughable argument being offered up to defend Karen Bass' auto-deleted text messages. And this argument was not coming from the city attorney's office. It was coming from Dave Michelson, a former city attorney who had hopped over and was the mayor's counsel. Last time I checked, Heidi Felstine Soto, I didn't vote for her, but she ran for office, she got elected, and she is our city attorney, not Dave Michelson. This is insulting to the voters, the charter, our state law, whatever. Now we are being sued over this mess, and we need a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for outside counsel. First, there's no way that's going to cover the tab. You all know that, this is just the beginning. And we're going to end up spending way more than that, if this actually goes to court and you intend to appeal it all the way. Secondly, do you realize how shameful this is? The theme of our budget season is we are trying to overturn every couch cushion and find some loose change. Mr. McCosker, if I told you I had a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars sitting around, you would, you would get so excited, like Sailing just got awarded to San Pedro. Because you know that could cover two positions, two essential positions in the city. Everyone matters. This is all on top of the, the ban on words, and at least that one, people are empathizing with you. They don't when it comes to ignoring public records law. I hope you realize the distinction there. This is all just indicative of the lack of checks and balances we have, and the concerns people had about Marquise being council president, because he is not serving this council, he's not serving the people, he's not serving any one of you. Above all, it's Karen Bass.
General public comment.
We've had this budget talk going on, and everybody wants to talk about charter reform. Even Matt Zavo, department heads, council members, city workers coming up here in public comment and saying we need systemic reform. And two weeks ago, Mayor Bass stood in this hall in front of the city and said she would be making her initial charter commission appointments with the week, with the goal of standing up the commission by the end of the month. We've blown Bass past both of those goals. She's had ten months to decide on these appointments. For the last four months, she's been out of compliance with the law y'all passed, that she signed for ten months. Mr. McCosker, what happened last summer? Karen Bass was not engaged with the officer discipline movement to overhaul that process, and vetoed it, saying that it was rushed, and we needed more time. Do you want to repeat that again? Because that's where we're walking towards. This city hall has been fucking around for way too long, and now we're finding out with this budget deficit. Are you all just gonna just mindlessly?
Speaker, your time has expired, next speaker.
Um, first of all, I want to ask Herman, Herman, how can he be for MAGA and against Trump? Okay, explain to us sometime.
So I'm gonna ask that, yeah, stick to the agenda items first, please.
But I, I want him to explain it sometime. Um, I, uh, saw that, uh, big, huge twenty-foot sign, uh, uh, against, uh, Mayor Bass, Karen Bass, saying resign and then we'll turn the lights on, okay? This domain means mafia, okay? So I have a little respect for Karen.
I can't tell which item you're on, you mentioned twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, twenty-seven, lights.
Twenty-seven is a street lighting district.
Yes, exactly what I'm talking about, that's what the, they said, uh, we'll turn the lights on if you resign. Okay, that's shit. That's, that's a corrupt, uh, city, okay? So I have a little respect for her. Also, what did they expect her to do? She eliminated forty-four jobs in the LAPD.
Okay, so I'm gonna move you to general public comment, but you have one minute, go ahead.
Okay, um, uh, I, before, uh, Paper Act request, I did it and found, uh, someone that was supposedly Romero killed my son. Uh, Gerson wrote me, Gail, Gail, Gason Officer, that my son's case is in the cold case file, meaning the police are lying, lying. Okay, ese libro nos escribió un hombre muy, muy, uh, religioso, okay? Como protege de los rayos X.
This book was written by a very smart man about how to protect yourself from X-rays.
Uh, él habla de, um, uh, energía dirigida.
He talks about directed energy.
Aunque no lo soy religiosa, ella sí, ver, muy religiosa.
Even though I'm not religious, he is.
Okay, um, also teleportation, él habla de teleportation. And la, la vida secular no hay teleportation.
And he also talks about teleportation, but in secular life, there is no teleportation.
Gracias.
Thank you.
My name is Jessica, I'm a property owner in Los Angeles. My home is located off Calzone Street, just off the five freeway. Uh, since August twenty-twenty-four, four K-Rails have been blocking my entrance to my home. They were originally at the end of the sidewalk, but due to frequent car accidents, one of them deadly, the barriers have been pushed directly against my property, and I'm not able to access my property. The car accidents continue, and they're now crashing into my retaining wall and causing damage and harm to my property. Despite numerous calls to Caltrans, City of L.A., Department of Transportation, uh, City Council's Office, District Fourteen, I have not been able to get ahold of anyone. Um, I've been calling numerous times, trying to schedule an email or an appointment, and I just want the K-Rails moved back to the original place so I can access my home. So I need help, um, from preventing property damage and to schedule an appointment with the city council's office of District Fourteen. Thank you.
Good afternoon, councilmembers, my name is Jonathan, a community health navigator with the TransLatina Coalition in City District Eight. I'm here to speak upon the initiative of the TGI Wellness Equity and Care Initiative, a fifty-three million dollar investment into TGI-led and TGI-serving CBOs. Along with this initiative, we advocate for an earmark of at least seven million in ULA funds for a housing subsidy open to a range of applicants that expands beyond TGI Angelenos. At this very moment, both immigrants and transgender, gender nonconforming, and intersex people are being attacked by the federal government. If there is no pushback or protections being introduced this fiscal year, things will be getting worse for these communities. It takes the power of a governmental force to fight against the vitriol that will continue to ignite more hate crimes and more dissension amongst Los Angelenos. We are thankful to those in the city that sincerely see that equity, racial justice, and LGBTQIA rights are all connected, and support for the fight for TGI people who need the city to build capacity to accurately address the issues impacting our communities. We hope that you are willing and able to break the cycle of erasure and improve the lives of TGI people through this current budgeting process. We appreciate your support, and we'll keep fighting until there's equity for all of us.
Thank you.
TGI, we, Ms. Loretta Lorraine Burt, um, uh, thank you, uh, Hugo and Ms., and Ms., Hunt and you, Ms. Hernandez, for doing so much good jobs. And I'm here to present, I'm the senior citizen, right here, the diamonds, I'm a piece of the diamonds for TransLatina. We are here to ask for three million dollars to keep people safe and to keep people, because our, 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 our community is dying, it's being killed out there. Hugo, thank you for, Ms. Emily, she was one of the girls that were murdered in Hollywood, and Hugo was there for her. And I'm here to make sure that we have a place, in a safe place, to, to make sure. And sir, that clown over there, honey, don't worry about him. We came serious, I come serious with you, with my people, to make sure that you do the right thing. Because this clown right here don't mean nothing, because he doesn't need you to come disrespect y'all. Y'all do y'all job and do it right.
We certainly appreciate everyone's patience, thank you.
I'd like to call up more names. Maya Daniels, Michelle Garcia, Bonnie Blue.
Good morning, which items would you like to speak to?
Forty-two and general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute for the item and one minute for general, go ahead.
Uh, good morning, City Council, Byron Jose with the TransLatina Coalition. And I know some of you said the example, so I think your staffers are gonna continue to just chat in the back during public comment. Um, we're glad to have met with Supervisor Jurado to ensure, to hear some of the priorities for her office. Uh, and if only we were as important as last management for Bob Blumenfield. Uh, thank you for the Budget Committee and the rest of the city council for meeting with us and ensuring that, um, your priorities are reflected in the budget and in your policy throughout the council. Uh, on June, on January sixth, uh, we emailed the office of Bob Blumenfield. On January twenty-third, we followed up. In March, I looked Jeff to ensure that the budget deputy for Bob Blumenfield, uh, was able to meet with us. So I will enlist the help of the city clerk and the sergeant-at-arms. We brought fourteen copies for every office, so that the rest of you can also see some of the impact, the need, and some of the services we rendered in, um, thank you, some of the services rendered in that district. Um, we have shared similar letters with most, all of you regarding your districts. So we definitely want to appreciate the opportunity to continue meeting with all of you, with your, with your deputies and your budget team, to ensure that this continues to go up. Um, I will wait here on the side for a staffer from Bob Blumenfield's office. I brought some copies for his entire team, there's twenty copies here. Um, I don't know who from that office is reading or not reading the emails, and I know he was able to dip out, so now we have, uh, Nithya here, so out of nowhere, uh, or for now, council president and, uh, Bob Blumenfield are headed to. Anyways, uh, thank you Supervisor, Councilmember Hut, for being one of the offices who is doing what she said she was going to do. The mayor's team did not include a line item for the TGI Wellness and Equity Initiative and made three million dollars, and yet during the budget process, Heather Hut, the council member, introduced a memo. So we look forward to working with the rest of the Budget Committee to ensure that that continues to be, uh, in the priority in the review on the eighth, and we also look forward to the rest of the council offices that are, are supporting this initiative. Thank you for your time.
Good morning, which items would you like to speak to?
General public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute, go ahead.
My name is Maya Daniels, my pronouns are they/them, and I'm the Policy Associate with the TransLatina Coalition. We are here today with our outreach team and a handful of our senior group, the Diamonds. These elders of our community have seen it all, and they are still here to show up and speak out for our community. We are hoping that our memo made by Councilmember Hut survives the week. We have letters for the bailiff to pass out to Councilmember Marquise Harris Dawson and his team, as we were unable to contact him or engage his office. These letters hold the data of clients the TransLatina Coalition serves in your district. I have around thirty-six copies. Our organization has been, as you well know by now, meeting with the city offices advocating for the TGI Wellness and Equity Initiative to locate three million to be distributed to several transgender, gender nonconforming, and intersex-serving organizations. As hate permeates our highest forms of government, it is imperative to invest in TGI communities, building their own infrastructures of safety and care, instead of leaving them in the hands of those who don't hold the knowledge to care for our communities or hold their own.
Speaker, your time has expired. Good morning, you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment, go ahead.
Come on, follow the rule, you have to ask my name, my name is Bonnie Blue Shilo Hendricks, and I'm here to speak on one, two, three, general. Uh, for item number one, this item has to change its gender first. Item number one. Uh, for item number two, item number two, it has to change its gender first. 我感动天感动地，怎么感动不了你？明明知道没有结局，却还死心塌地。For item number three, item number three has to change its gender first. For general public comment. For general public comment, I want to hear, to talk about our council president and our city attorney. You have to change your gender first. And second of all, I'm here to ask our city attorney that, our city attorney said a fighting word is not allowed in the city council, a threatening word is not allowed in the city council. And then when I reported to the city attorney that someone said, I'm going to kill your dog, someone said, I'm going to kill you, and then somehow, city attorney said, those are not threatening words. City attorney said, those are not fighting words. And then city attorney quoted the Supreme Court cases, Chiplinski. So, I mean, kill is not a, is not a fighting word, is not a threatening word because Mr. Herman used the same word. He got arrested by the LAPD. But any other community member using the kill word against Mr. Herman, Mr. City Attorney said, that's totally okay. Thank you very much, City Attorney. I love you.
So just to clarify the record there, I do not believe the city attorney's office has ever said anything about that matter.
I'd like to call up more names.
Buenos dias. Good morning. My name is Alex Salarin.
Good morning. My name is Alex Salarin.
Vengo a apoyar, vengo a abogar por mis compañeras TransLatina Coalition para las personas mayores como yo. TransLatina Coalition
Can we hold our time for just a second?
Señora Alejandra.
Hold on just one second. If I could ask the interpreters, and we're we're holding their time, just to let the speaker know to pause every few sentences and then let us know which items they would like to speak to.
Señora Alejandra, antes de que empiece de nuevo, tenemos que pedirle que para permitir la interpretación, necesitamos que usted dé una pausa después de cada frase para permitir la interpretación. ¿Me podría decir en cuáles puntos quisiera dar su comentario?
Pues yo soy sorda, no oigo, y este, he pasado muchas tragedias, y TransLatina Coalition me ha ayudado bastante.
I'm sorry. Is it general public comment?
I'm I'm sorry, Mr. Attorney. The the commenter has commented that they are deaf and may not be able to hear what I'm saying. We'll be sending an interpreter to the podium in one moment.
Okay, so why don't
Es un comentario general para todas.
This is a general comment for everyone.
Yo quiero que ayuden a toda mi comunidad TransLatina Coalition para que ayude a las chicas.
So why don't we do this? If I can have this explained to the speaker. We're going to reset the clock. If if you need more time for this accommodation request, please let us know. But to pause every few sentences so that the interpreters can interpret, but take your time. Go ahead.
Necesito que ayuden a TransLatina Coalition en general.
We need you to help the TransLatino Coalition in general.
Para que ayuden a las trans de todas las tercera edad porque ya nosotros no podemos trabajar.
So that you can help senior trans people because they are no longer able to work.
Y por favor quiero que los ayuden en el nombre de Dios, please.
And I ask that you help them in the name of God, please.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Buenas tardes. Mire, mi nombre es Michelle Garcia.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Michelle Garcia.
Es un comentario general.
And this is a general comment.
Yo, más que nada, yo quisiera que nos ayudaran a las mujeres transgénero que ya somos mayor de edad.
And in overall, I would like to ask for you to help trans women since we are now senior citizens.
Que nosotras fuimos las pioneras, fuimos las, les abrimos las puertas a toda la juventud.
We were the pioneers of this. We were the ones that opened this trail for our youth.
A nosotras nos golpearon. Qué no nos hicieron.
They hit us. They assaulted us. They hurt us.
Y cuántas amigas ya se nos fueron cuando vino la, esa enfermedad del HIV.
And how many friends have we lost after the new illness came about with HIV?
Y las que quedamos.
And those of us that are still here.
Porque en aquellos tiempos nos tomábamos un coctel de pastillas en la mañana y un coctel de pastillas en la noche.
Because in those times, we were basically taking a cocktail of pills during the in the morning and then another cocktail of pills at night.
Y yo, en representación de mis compañeras, les pido que nos ayuden.
And I, in name of myself and my my friends, we we ask for your help.
Que ya estamos enfermas, ya no podemos trabajar.
We're sick now and we can't work anymore.
Eso es todo. Muchas gracias.
And that's it. Thank you very much.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Good morning. Hello, my name is Cristo Barajas with TransLatina Coalition, District Eight. I'm going to, I'm coming here to support the community TGI. I'm here to speak as part of the TGI Wellness Equity and Care Initiative, a three million investment into TGI, leading TGI-serving community-based organizations. This is coming directly from community members, clients and leaders and founders of several organizations, organizations. Cutter to base helping our community. Along with this initiative, we will care for an earmark of at least seven million ULA funds for a housing subsidy to a range of applicants that expanded beyond TGI Angelenos. The county has stepped up to support the TGI constituents, and there is still time for our city council to do the same. Thank you.
Hello, good morning.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
General Public Comment.
Okay, and feel free to move the mic if you'd like. You have one minute. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Hello, everyone. My name is Elise Tejada, and I'm from TransLatina Coalition. The mission of the TransLatina Coalition is to advocate the specific needs of the TransLatina community that resides in the United States into planning strategies that improve our quality of life. That mean is, TransLatina Coalition is the place that supports our transgendered community. I am Elise. I am not only immigrant, I am transgender woman. Please, we really need your support, guys, because TransLatina Coalition is the safe place to support our community. And your hands, and your voice, and your vote, and your mind is our lives. Please, my future, the future of my coworkers, the future of my community, TransLatina Coalition is in your hands. Please, we really need you to approve the three million dollars, and this is going to be the best opportunity for our community. Thank you.
I believe that's our last speaker.
There are no more people. That concludes public comment.
Okay. So we'll we'll allow for one, our final speaker. Please proceed to the podium. That'll be the final speaker of the day. Thank you. Okay, please proceed, speaker. This will be our final speaker.
So, good good morning, speaker. I understand there is an accommodation request, so take your time. Which items would you like to speak to?
General Public Comment, please.
Okay, so you have one minute. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Bernard, and I am a resident of Council District Ten. I'd like to explicitly thank Kimani Danielle Alex from Councilmember Hutt, Hutt's office, for contacting Melissa Conley, the Wellington Square Farmers Market Manager. I am so fortunate to live in a community where the elected leaders actually listen to and address the constituents' concerns. So thank you again, and go Bruins.